Okay, this regular meeting of the Luray Town Council will now come to order. Will you please stand and join me for a moment of silence? I'll ask Councilperson Low to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Danielle, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor Dolph Lundgren.
Here.
Mr. Bickers?
Here.
Ms. Lowery?
Here.
Mr. Shiro?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
Mr. Sowers?
Here.
And Mr. Webb?
Here.
Okay, do we have any additions to or deletions from the agenda? Hearing none. Mr. Bickers, the consent agenda, please.
Before that, Mayor, I'd like, I think in the work session minutes on page two, there's a mistake. I'm not totally positive, but they had .084 rate increase for single user. Isn't that .84 cents a month?
Uh...
I think there's actually zero.
Why are you?
It's the work session minutes on page two.
Thank you, Jason.
About the second paragraph down.
.084.
The Nichols Road waterline installment, certain tenant salary adjustment, single user increases .084 per month, eighty-four thousand, supposed to be eighty-four cents, I think. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
So with that change...
Good catch. Thank you, Ron.
I move to approve the filing consent agenda with that change I spoke of. The minutes of the regular council meeting on March fourteenth, 2022, the minutes of the work session, March twenty-second, 2022, the financial report ending March thirty-first, 2022, and accounts payable totaling one hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred and two dollars and forty-seven cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Danielle?
Ms. Lowery? Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
All right, did we have anyone? I don't see anybody signed up for the general citizen comments. Does anyone here want to speak during the general citizens comment period? Steve, we have any?
No, sir.
No letters?
No one.
All right, we'll move on. Presentations, Hawksville Greenway Foundation. Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I sent you a letter. I think you have a letter concerning a proposal that we have before you. We would, this would be like the first step if we want to move forward with the Greenway expansion as we head toward Jaeger Springs. Tyler Austin from Racy Engineering's here. Our treasurer and our secretary are here from the foundation, so we'll be glad to answer any questions and just put a face on it. We'll be happy to split the twenty-eight thousand dollar proposal from Racy to get something going, as they say. Foundation would be happy to pick up fourteen thousand and hopefully y'all would pick up fourteen and we could get this going. I think if, with this proposal, it would also help us in our grant writing. We'd have some preliminary data, some good information that would help us as we apply for grants to move this forward. So if you have any questions, we've got a whole team here. We'll be happy to try to answer them. Steve's been very involved with this as well in the meetings.
And I recall from your all's meeting, there is a chance that later, if you did get a grant, it could be retroactively replied to the feasibility study.
That's my understanding.
Yes, correct. Our plan is to try to recover the total cost.
Right.
Just make sure I understand. So this would itemize as far as all the different costs associated with it and get some kind of preliminary design on the bridge? Would that be sort of part of it?
Yes, the base survey and you get a quarter layout to kind of determine where this can go. I do have money in one of those phases to do a preliminary flood elevation to see how high that bridge is going to have to be, these preliminary design parameters on that bridge. We can update the estimate at the end of this point, but there are some other pieces in that, what we would call phase two of that preliminary, get more into the environmental phases, the aspects. But Steve, Steve had a good point. We really have to get a baseline, an alignment, kind of get some rough grading, get an idea of what this is and look at where it's going to be at. And that would help part one, get grant writing moving, you know, show something on paper. Obviously present something to you guys to see. And then step two of that would be to really pin down for scope on other, because that gets into a different subs, your environmental subs, your geotech, to kind of really pin down and see what we're going to need. So twofold there with that first thing, really getting that layout down and the alignment.
What's the, what kind of timeframe you looking on this time? Or is it, will it line up with some of the grant application work that?
I do need to talk about this a little more when I have our, it's in our queue to get started on the survey, which the whole industry is behind and we are certainly behind. It's probably in our eyes.
Steve, no issue as far as using the ARPA? Are we funding for any of that?
Well, that's your item G for consideration. We believe that because there's been unfortunately or fortunately some delay in the ability of the police vehicles to be delivered in a timely fashion, even in this current fiscal year, we believe the council can authorize reallocating the fourteen or twenty-eight thousand from what would have gone towards the police vehicles that won't be delivered until the next fiscal year, which is when we anticipate the next delivery of ARPA monies.
And so how does that work? So we will allocate twenty-eight towards it and the foundation will reimburse fourteen?
Yes, sir. Okay.
This, this project has to be done in the name of the town. It's you on the line.
Counselor.
I'm on fourth.
Do we need to motion move forward here or later on here we're talking about funding?
Yes, sir, that's, that's your, this was included on, as your last item of the regular action and discussion items.
Not now.
No, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dudley, and thank you to the foundation for all you're doing. We certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Luray Downtown Initiative, Ms. Elliott.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Excuse me, a couple of quick things. The, if you look in your pockets, I have included a grant that Steve and I worked on. It is a remote working pilot program that Virginia Main Street's doing, and we have been fortunate enough to be selected to participate in that study. I think it's going to be a really good thing. They're going to be coming to have an in-person meeting with us May twenty-fourth, and I'm sure we'll do a walk and talk and kind of get that together. And then we will be launching everything with a Zoom meeting, June the twenty-eighth. They'll be giving us all of the roasts and particulars and whatnot then so that we can get the program started. So we're excited about that. A big thank you to Steve for his help because he helped me tremendously on getting this written because they gave it to me on a Friday and they needed it by Monday. Yeah, so he was a huge help on that. Also in your pockets, you're going to see that we've included our annual funding letter. And this year, just a little, something a little different. I did attach to that a list of all the facade grant recipients for 2021 and the amounts that were given to them, just so that you have a baseline to see who we worked with and what improvements were made through the LDI facade grant program. We're currently working on our Fourth of July and other events. We're working on some fundraising. We're having another work session tomorrow evening at the visitor center to assure up to fundraising projects that we're working on. So we're going to be excited. We're excited to announce it, but we're waiting till we have everything ready to launch. And then the other thing is I am working on another dig grant for the town that is going to be due April twenty-eighth, so I'm working on that now. That dig grant, we can actually use it for marketing. The money's for marketing. It can be for physical or for marketing. So I'm digging into that now and I'll probably be calling on Mr. Burke again for, to get some questions answered. So that's kind of what we got going on.
Thank you, and congratulations on your grant.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
All right, public hearings. Going to have a special use permit. Twenty-two dash oh-one Distillery, six twenty-two West Main Street. From Conrad Kobe to operate a distillery at six twenty-two, again, six thirty-two West Main Street, and the property of his own business, B one. So I'll open the public hearing. Audrey, I think you've signed up to speak. Nice to have you as always.
Good evening, council, mayor. I'm Audrey King. I own six thirty West Main Street, the West Luray Recreation Center. So I'm here to speak in favor of Mr. Conrad Kobe and his establishment that's going to be at, I think, six twenty-six or six twenty-four West Main Street. I've spoken to the mayor in favor. I've met at the establishment with Councilman Sowers. And I think it's a wonderful thing, and I just want to share my reasoning for welcoming this establishment into our neighborhood on West Main Street. Number one, you know, we're always an advocate of small local businesses coming into Luray, especially something that can advocate tourism, especially to the west side of town. One of the, the aspects of living legacy in the West Luray Recreation Center is to create a positive and a healthy environment and to show people the beauty that's located on the west side of town. And having this next door, I believe, does so. Another reason why I'm an advocate is because I do see a day in the future where we will have enough businesses on the west end of town that we can go to the downtown initiative with an encouraging picture to maybe extend that to the west end where the rec center is. So that's a goal of mine for the future. Also, I met with the residents and the constituents of the west side of Luray, Bixers Ferry, Hillside Road, Hillside Lane, Hilltop Lane, along with Mead Street, Jordan Street. And out of fifty-four residents, I think there were four that were opposed at first. They didn't want a bar area to be on the west side of town. But from there, we actually had Mr. Kobe and his wife, they came to the rec center. We had a community meeting and he laid out the plans and showed that it wasn't going to be necessarily a bar area. You could only indulge to, I think, three ounces per sitting, I think, three ounces, or something of that nature. And from there, some of the ones that were opposed took back or they resent their opposition. And I think it's a great thing. I, my last reason why I believe I'm an advocate of this is in nineteen eighty-nine, my grandfather put this shop there. Local man just didn't want to drive down the country and work anymore, and he tried his hand in entrepreneurship. And through that, that shop made a, you know, a prospering community advocate. It also made a prospering area for people to be able to get their cars fixed. And also, as a family man, it gave him an opportunity to provide for his family right here in Luray. And so with Mr. Kobe being, one, a firefighter, which in my opinion, those are heroes in itself, his wife working right here at the, the local hospital, I think it's just an awesome story how someone can come from out of town, you know, try their luck and, and believe that they're going to make something out of the future. So I welcome, embrace what they're doing. I think as a whole, the west side of Luray embraces what they're doing. And, you know, they painted the establishment, so they're already bringing beauty to the west side of town. So I'm in complete support of it. As well as living legacy, our board, our executive board is in support of it. And I believe, as you all know, as, as people that are elected officials, you can't please everybody. But I believe as a majority, we're in favor.
Thank you, Audrey.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. All right, Audrey's the only one signed up to speak, but does anyone else want to speak on this special use permit? Steve, no other communications, no letters?
No, sir, we didn't receive anything.
Hearing nothing, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, discussion?
I don't mind. I move that the town council approve the special use permit to operate a distillery at six twenty-two West Main Street as presented.
Second that.
All right. No more discussion?
I'd just, I'd just like to say that I appreciate the opportunity here a week or two ago to tour the facility and actually lay eyes on it, be inside the building and see what the plans are. And it is impressive, and that helps a great deal. We get a chance to actually be there, meet with the owners, and see what the dream is and see the, see the site. So thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, as I've said before, I think you did this whole process as well or better than any of I have ever seen. I mean, you had the, really, you had the planning commission, the council up there for site visit, you had the community forum, whatever you want to call it, and you've just, you've done, certainly done your homework.
Very much. I appreciate that.
No more discussion? All right, Danielle?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move to another public hearing. When it receives citizen comment, consider request for a special use permit from Bryce Roland to operate a lodging house at twenty-two North D Ford Avenue in the townhouse and apartment residential R five district. We have a little more here. Lodging house is commonly defined as a residential building, other than hotel, motel, or bed and breakfast home. Where lodging is provided for compensation on a regular basis pursuant to previous arrangements, but which is not open to the public or transient guests for no longer than thirty consecutive days. Meals may be provided to the residents in a central location, however. No provision shall be made for cooking in individual rooms or units. The maximum number of guests shall be two per bedroom with onsite parking for all guests. Under staff, it's recommended the following conditions be considered. Occupancy of no more than six guests at any one time. All street parking is required for all guest vehicles. One identification sign can be permitted on the property not exceeding four square feet on either side. Meals, if provided, shall be served to only guests renting bedrooms in the dwelling and obtain town business license, transient occupancy tax and meals tax must be collected and remitted to the town. And the planning commission did approve this unanimously after March sixteenth meeting. All right, so I'll open the public hearing. Again, no one signed, no one signed up to speak on that. Does anyone here tonight want to speak? Again, Steve, nothing from you.
No, sir.
All right. Hearing nothing, I will close the public hearing. Counsel?
Mayor, I have a motion. I move that the town council approve a special use permit to operate a lodging house at twenty-two North D Ford Avenue as presented.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? Danielle?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
All right. Another public hearing on item seven C, code amendment, section four oh-two point eight, street names. Council was requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen comments and to consider a code amendment to section four oh-two point eight, street names in the subdivisions, subdivision section of the town code. At our February fourteenth meeting, the town council adopted a code amendment to town code chapter seventy-four dash E dash nine-one-one addressing more closely aligned with the county's code related to addressing. The town attorney had drafted the ordinance whereby the town manager, county administrator, and county GIS manager evaluate a request to name or rename a town road or subdivision for compliance and then present a request to town council for final approval. Following adoption of that code amendment, town council referred to code amendment to appendix B subdivision, section four oh-two point eight, to reference chapter seventy-four as amended for review. Four oh-two point eight, street names. All proposed street names shall be named in accordance with chapters seventy-four, article four of the town code as amended. And the town council did review this and unanimously recommended approval. All right, again, no one signed up to speak on this. I'll open the, excuse me, I'll open the public hearing, but no one signed up to speak on this. Does anyone here tonight wish to speak? Steve, nothing?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing nothing, I will again close the public hearing. Counsel?
Mayor, I'll move the town council adopt code amendment to appendix B subdivision, section four oh-two point eight as presented.
Second.
Danielle? Excuse me, now, excuse me, wait, wait, any discussion on this, counsel? I'm sorry, Danielle?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
I encourage the public, if they were ever curious as far as road type designators, it's, it's interesting to see what all the different roads and peaks and loops and all that.
It's a lot of information in there. Good information.
Okay, another public hearing. The town council was requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen comment on the following fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three tax rates. Real estate tax rate restoration from point oh-two-six-seven to point oh-two-nine brings in one hundred and ten thousand. Meals and beverage tax rate from four percent to five percent brings in one hundred and seventy thousand. Transient occupancy tax rate from five percent to six percent brings in forty thousand. Cigarette tax rate from ten, from fifteen cents per pack to twenty cents per pack, and that results in a gain of forty-five thousand. State code requires at least a seven-day delay on action by the town council on any adjustment to the tax rates. All right, so I'll open the public hearing. Ms. Cave, I believe you've signed up to speak. I think you've been with us before, but you might as given, given us your name and address anyway for our records.
Carol Cave, twelve seventy-two Elgin Drive in Luray. And I'm speaking specifically to the meals tax. I don't know about anybody else in the restaurant business, but I know that everything's gone up. We've increased our prices. We had turned around and increased them again within two weeks. And I just don't know if we can absorb anymore. We've absorbed all we can absorb. And it's just, that, that industry has been hit hard from everything, from the fuel to supplies to everything. And it's, it's really causing us to have a struggle with getting pricing out there and being able to keep it and keep people. And, and my customers are local. My customers are not tourists going through. I, I probably don't have one percent of my customers that are tourists because I can almost tell you everybody that comes there every week. And they've been very gracious about the price increases and they understand, but this is just another burden on us all. And I'm not going to belabor the point. You know where I am.
Carol, thank you for being here. Anybody else want to speak? Again, nothing, Steve?
No, sir.
All right, I'll close the public hearing on that.
Mr. Mayor, I have to say something in relation to Ms. Cave's comment. Being a restaurant owner too, and I'm basically wanting to address this to the council as well as the public. My career had been in government sector, as most of us on this council have been state or local employees. I would not have understand had I not started a small business after retirement as far as what goes into small business, the sacrifices and the work that's there. I may have thought I knew, but I would not have known. There's still a lot I've got to learn. But one thing that I do want to mention tonight because it was recently meant, recently said that, well, the meals tax is just a pass-through tax. Well, we can call it what we want, pass-through or whatever. There is a cost to small business. I think that people don't realize that one of the issues, credit cards. I know our operation is probably over eighty percent is credit cards. And the fee that the merchant pays on credit cards, and a lot, a lot of customers don't even realize this. When you accept a customer's credit card, you're billed a swipe fee and a percentage fee of the total. Well, that total that you're billed is the grand total of the sale, including tax, meals and sales tax. So at the end of the month, if you have a thousand dollar bill to pay to the credit card company, and we raised another percent on meals tax, you're now at ten point three, ten point three percent of that bill is tax that you as a small business are paying for collecting that tax. So you just spent a hundred dollars to the credit card company if the total bill for the fees was a thousand. I can tell you with our business, our, our bill, we're only up four days a week. And my credit card fees per month average between five to seven or eight hundred dollars a month to be up four days a week. So that's the cost to small business. So it's not just a pass-through fee as if it doesn't cost the business anything. The other thing is too, not all businesses, but, but most, I am an accountant that does my monthly work, that does my payroll, does my taxes, everything else. That's a fair fee that's paid every month to my accountant. Well, one of the forms that my accountant prepares is a meals tax form. That all that computation is done, the form's completed, I march a check down here every month and present it to the town. Okay? That doesn't come free for me either. That's part of my monthly cost of what I pay my accountant. So there's two monetary expenses you can actually put a dollar figure on that small businesses are going to incur with a increase on meals tax, if you're obviously a restaurant. The other thing is too, that you can't put the price on, but I think this is what Ms. Cave's alluding to too, is that your customer, there is only so much you can do. TV Three just interviewed a couple Harrisonburg businesses in the food industry, and they're talking about, and we're experiencing the same thing. Our, our costs are up over thirty percent for most of our food items, especially our consumables such as paper products, styrofoam cups, containers, all that is, is more than thirty percent up. When you raise your prices, restaurant margins, profit margins are thin to begin with in food. But when you're starting to be hit with twenty, with thirty percent increases, you can't just raise that price of your food thirty percent. You wind up actually shrinking your profit margin so you're not hitting it as hard with that full thirty percent increase in what your costs are. The other thing that's happened to the restaurant industry, the minimum wage change, which is significant, by the next year, it will almost be double what minimum wage was for a lot of restaurants. They've had to absorb that. The other thing that comes with that is your workers' compensation insurance. If you have one of the two employees, you have workers' comp insurance, and that premium is based on your total payroll. So it's not based on whether you have fifteen employees or three employees. It's based on what your total expense per year is on your payroll. So we're paying higher rates on workers' comp insurance as a result of higher minimum wage. But where I was going is, the one thing that really hits us though as the business is when your customer looks at your menu and says, hey, I'll have the nine ninety-nine lunch combo, and you say, yes, sir, that'll be eleven oh-three. And they look at you, we're the ones that have to deal face-to-face with the customers, like, why is that eleven oh-three? You know, and I mean, they understand tax, but it's just every bit of the increase hurts. And this is a time right now where restaurant food industry is struggling. I look at Luray, and I made a list, and this is just what I could think of. In less than ten years, we have lost a Pizza Hut, an Artisans, an Uncle Buck's, Fifty-Five East, Browns, KFC, Tasty Freeze, the Lunchbox, Mendy's, Dubliner's, Mocha and Cheese. That's just what I can remember off the top of my head. These are restaurants that were in town less than ten years ago operating that are now gone. So if we think that there's not an issue with continuing to go for that meals tax, I think if anything's evidence, it's that. If the well's going dry, you can't keep going in the same way. But anyway, Ms. Cave, everybody, thank y'all for coming tonight. But anyway, Ms. Cave, buddy, thank y'all for coming tonight. I'm with you, I understand small business and I get it. And if I wasn't in it, I wouldn't understand that cost, I wouldn't understand all that's behind it, but when you live it each day, yeah, it's real. And it's not a guaranteed paycheck, like it is being a government employee where your paycheck's coming every week, all you have to do is work the hours. With food industry, you can have a rainy day or a snowy day, and that day just turned into a loss instead of a profit, even though you worked the whole day.
Do you want to say something, buddy?
I do, Jerry. Just want to put the thing, give an example. We opened back up February the first for Saturday. We went to Timberville where we pick up our chicken and that we barbecue. Case of chicken runs seventy-four to seventy-five dollars, spent ninety-five cents a pound for, what, Carol, eight, nine years. It hasn't went up. We go back on the second Friday in February to pick up our chicken. That seventy-five dollar box of chicken now is a hundred and ten dollars. That went up that much, and that chicken went from ninety-five cents a pound to a dollar thirty-nine. And we can only raise, you know, your prices so much. And, but I just would give you an idea of how much of a jump to some of this food. We was buying our oil for our deep fryers at Costco for seventeen dollars and twenty-five cents a year ago, now we're paying forty dollars for them. And I mean, it's a lot of jumps, and anywhere we can save to keep our costs down, we appreciate it.
Thank you, buddy. I guess we'll discuss this later.
It's a motion to set a special meeting. Move that council call special meeting for April twenty-sixth to consider adjustments to the FY twenty-two, twenty-three tax rates.
Any discussion on that?
I'll just say.
I'm sorry.
On the, when we come back on the twenty-sixth, we'll actually just decide what the rates will be.
That's, that's.
I'll just be honest, you know, I didn't realize it was, I thought, always thought it was five percent, but four percent's fine. I'm in favor just to keep it in that way. It's just my thought is the real estate tax, and just my personal opinion, is raising the real estate tax, calling it going back to where it was at twenty-nine in the cigarette tax. So that's just my two cents, and I know we'll talk about it again on the twenty-sixth. So anyway.
Any other thoughts on that, counsel?
Yeah, one other thing, a tax is a disincentive to do something by default, right? So if we look at the things we're talking about taxing, we're talking about disincentivizing people from investing in real estate in Luray if we go up on it. We're talking about disincentivizing people from eating out, and we're talking about disincentivizing people from visiting here and lodging here in Luray. Now, the cigarette one, I'm kind of okay disincentivizing people from doing that, frankly, but the rest of them, we don't want that, we want quite the opposite. You know, we want to be an open place. Jackie's working on this grant now for remote work, that's something that I've been on for a long time, the idea that you can live here and enjoy the quality of life that is unique to a place like Luray and still work for a place that's based out of DC or wherever it's based out of. So the more that we incentivize those good activities, the better, in my book. That's where I stand.
And I agree. I think that the other thing that we're looking at with this is timing to be talking about tax increases, and I know we've got a problem here with some shortcomings on our budget. I know on the twenty-sixth, I'm going to bring up some other issues of our own budget and specific line items, and we've got some departments that have grown, increased quite a bit in our budget over the last couple of years. I'd like to know why that is. We'll dig into that. But when it comes to our citizens in Luray, as we're just talking about with prices going up, from gas prices to food costs, everything else, we've talked about it on the business side, Mr. Cave, but even the citizens from just going to the grocery store, even if they never come to our establishments to eat or whatever, everyone is having to spend more, and it's costing more. And I think right now the timing to hit our citizens with a real estate increase and a meals increase, I'm not in favor of either one of those for sure. The cigarette tax, I'm sort of enjoying, I see that a little bit. Profit margins must be good in cigarettes because when I travel to Shenandoah Valley, I see a vapor tobacco shop open new on about every corner of every town I go through, so they must be making money, looks pretty good. And I spoke with two people in the lodging industry that were not opposed to the percent on the lodging tax, and part of the question that I asked during that meeting with those people was the, when I look at lodging, and there's a lot I don't know about that, I'm sure, but the expense that someone's paying there for lodging is to occupy that space during the night or whatever and leave the next morning. There's some cost to shampoo, toilet paper, the cleaning person, whether you do it yourself or you pay someone or whatever, but someone's not leaving with the pillows and the sheets and everything else that you have to restock versus retail sales of restaurant. We can only make money when something's leaving. We have to restock everything that we're selling. The lodging industry, you've got that initial investment of the property, but the cost per night as far as your expense after someone's coming left is minimal compared to retail. So I can see where some of the people are talking about it, that the one percent we get there is bad. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a different perspective, I guess, and I understand everything everyone's saying, and I appreciate it, appreciate what Mr. and Ms. Cave have to say as well, and Jason, you too. But on that same spectrum, keep in mind that it costs the town more every year as well to provide the level of services that we're providing. And a lot of those services that we provide are in the form of recreational services, services that appeal to tourism and to people to come into the town, which to a degree benefits both the lodging and the restaurants. And keeping the lodging and restaurant taxes up with the cost for service does buffer the real estate tax as well, so we make up some of that. We're not passing on to the residential real estate tax. But I understand what you're saying, but I'm just saying that we provide a lot of services here, and we're asked for more, we're asked for more in this budget, and we're asking, we're constantly being asked to do additional things. And it comes with a price. I mean, that's all I'm saying, it just comes with a price. Something to think about on the other end of it.
Anybody else? We have a motion to have this special meeting on, I think, April twenty-sixth, so no more discussion on that. Anybody else? Daniel?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, code amendment, chapter six point six, vehicle flyers.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider a code amendment to section six point six as it relates to putting flyers on vehicles that are parked on town streets. We're requesting that council consider adjusting in to on as well as to add a clarifier that it only relates to any advertisements placed on a vehicle without the owner's consent.
All right, counsel, any thoughts on that, any discussion?
Does that mean if the owner does consent, people are going to put flyers on your vehicle?
Yes, sir.
It's just kind of a weird phrasing in a sense, but it's fine, you know.
It was basically the best way to deal with it.
I know, yeah.
I just came up today about other public parking lots, like parking lots, all other town-owned property. We, this region, we don't really deal with public streets, but the public parking lots and other publicly owned areas under this, you can still put flyers up.
Let's get this done, and if somebody wants to bring that up, they can.
Sure. That's a good point. So you're saying like a Ralph Dean, as it's currently written, someone could go nuts.
That was the question today, so specifically about.
Should we move ahead with this, Courtney?
Yes, please, and then we'll work with Jason to see if there's any impediments to including public lots.
Okay, I'll move the town council approve code amendment to town code section six ten six regarding advertisements placed on vehicles as presented.
Second.
Any more discussion? Daniel?
Ms. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Burke, start up.
Yes, sir. Town's received a request from Mashpee Marshall for the town to extend water service to his property at one oh seven Patriot Way through a one-inch water meter. Mr. Marshall has confirmed that he has the necessary easements to allow him to extend water service down to the right of way where the town would install a meter, and staff supports this request.
All right, counsel?
This is what we discussed last meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I have a motion. I move that the town council approves the provision of water service outside of the town limits to one oh seven Patriot Way in conformance with the town's established standards and fees as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Shauer?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lowery?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke?
Council's requested to consider award of the Westlu Sanitary Pump Station to Patterson Construction in an amount not to exceed one million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars. Funding for this would come from the five hundred and thirty thousand dollars that council has authorized in ARPA allocations, the estimated three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars in sanitary sewer fees from the Luray Landing area, and then we anticipate requiring a little under three hundred thousand dollars from either additional ARPA funds or other sources to fully fund this project. Brian Christman is, once council awards this contract, Brian will work with Patterson to try and remove any items that aren't truly necessary for the project. We don't anticipate that being more than a hundred thousand dollars, but it's at least worth value engineering to try and bring the cost down.
Any questions for Brian or Steve?
I guess on the fees that are due, the anticipated sewer fees, I guess the first questions, have we collected any of those? I know we talked about it at the last meeting, but have we actually?
The proffer fees, yes, sir. They have started on, I believe, sixteen of the townhomes, and so those sixteen probably within the next month and a half will be receiving the connection and facility fees for those. And it's our understanding that they intend to continue construction of the remaining lots with additional lots to be developed after July.
So these thirty-two lots of Luray Landing, they're thirty-two facility fees and thirty-two lot proffer fees, then they come, they came in and got the?
They have zoning permits from that, yes, sir.
Just going to give us one lump sum at some point?
Is that what? Again, they're only building, I believe, eighteen, sixteen right now, so once they get those constructed, they would come in and pay the facility fee so that they can then sell them. It's my understanding that as soon as they get those sixteen built, they're going to turn around and hold building permits for the next sixteen.
But we're collecting, I thought, it's ten, right, at the issuance of the zoning permit?
Well, we collect the proffer fees at the zoning issuance. We don't collect the connection fees until they come in and request that a meter be set.
Okay, I guess that's what I was trying to ask, so.
So we have forty-one thousand.
I mean, if they build sixteen and then come back in a couple of years, we might not get that, I mean.
Potentially, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Have you have any idea on the apartments? They'll be connected sometime soon, I assume.
We have put in a request, and that's an additional two hundred and seventy-odd thousand between water and sewer, and we've been told by people that they will send a check soon.
Checks in the mail.
No, no. They didn't even go that far, the checks in the mail. I wish they had sent.
Yeah, right, right.
But so there is potential for additional funds that will arrive, and there may not need to be a significant reallocation of ARPA.
So if we do get the entire three fifty-one for what, at some point, and the five thirty that's been allocated, I know I emailed today, we have two ninety-three.
Yes, sir.
Two ninety-three, three, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars that'd be left, that would be required. I mean, my feeling is just, you know, we have the funds from the ARPA, we might as well just allocate it from that. It could actually go over two ninety-three if the other townhouses aren't built, say the next, they don't come in and want meters, and they're not going to want those meters probably for another six months if they're starting construction, but I would, so that number two ninety-three could go up another hundred K or whatever.
I think that's the intent, right, that we're going to fund the project from?
From both ARPA and connection fees.
And connection fees, yeah.
Okay, I think that's what I was trying to say, so I think I'd be comfortable.
No, I agree with you, I think that's.
And I did do a little sheet just to show us where we were on ARPA. This is a sidebar here. If we did allocate another two ninety-three, we would be at, on top of what we've already allocated toward that list station, I'm estimating we're at two point seven four two, about fifty-four, almost fifty-five percent. So I'll pass this out to everyone, just as a FYI, just trying to keep tabs as we go along, so that, just as I see it.
This is a tough pill to swallow, the cost going up, but I mean, if you look at, what, just ballpark it, a hundred bucks a month per resident, if we're getting sixteen, that's sixteen hundred a month, it's coming in, not to mention real estate tax and everything else, so.
Well, and the fact of the matter is that we're going to have to replace it.
We have to either way, but then we also have additional revenues coming in to offset, so it's, you know.
I know it's going up, but we'd be in a world of trouble if we didn't have the five million dollars that's coming in, you know, that's for sure, so.
ARPA just goes out and we have to replace it on an emergency basis, it's going to cost us all.
All right, any more discussion on that?
Costs are going up.
We have a motion.
I'll make a motion amid the Luray Town Council award, the West Luray Sanitary Sewer Pump Station Project to Patterson Construction Company in an amount not to exceed one point one, one million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars, with funding to come from the American Rescue Plan Action Fund allocation, sewer facility, and proffer fees and fund revenues as presented.
Second that.
Any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, or let's see, Mr. Burke, you're on the tent donation.
Yes, sir. Town council's requested to consider a request from Dal McGrady with Boy Scout Troop One Hundred to donate the town's inflatable tent that was obtained from government surplus to the Boy Scouts.
Thoughts on that?
Ready for a motion?
If you're ready. There's no discussion yet, let's go to it.
I move the town council approve the donation of the town's inflatable tent to Boy Scout Troop One Hundred as presented.
No discussion?
Seems kind of like a slam dunk.
Oh, it is.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lowery?
Yes.
Mr. Shiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, our budget.
Yes, sir. Town council's requested to consider approval of the public hearing advertisement for the FY twenty-two, twenty-three town budget, to have a public hearing set on June thirteenth with the council having a special meeting this month that would allow staff time to do all of the, well, and council to vote on the tax adjustments that you would like and then adjust, include whatever adjustments of unfunded items into the budget so that we can include any of those items that would be included in this advertisement.
Any thoughts on that?
That gives you adequate timing, you know, in case we say no to everything or, you know, something else happens.
Well, if you say no to everything, then the ad goes as is. If council adjusts any tax revenue to adjust the budget, we would then, if it was a real estate, any of the revenues would be adjusted by whatever rate is approved by town council. We hope to have at that special meeting, council also to identify what specific items they want included as expenditures in the budget. they want included as expenditures in the budget to offset the new revenues.
Okay, so you feel comfortable with the time, it's not going to be a scramble for you all?
No, sir, it's a, by having your special meeting in April, that gives us three weeks to adjust the advertise, advertisement as necessary.
Vale?
I'll move the town council approve the public hearing advertisement for the FY 2223 town budget for June 13, 2022 should be, I think.
Oops. Second that.
That's a 22, right. Okay, any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Chiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Bab?
Council has requested to consider authorizing an adjustment for the current year budget specifically related to the line item for the debt service account for 195, 191, 80 to account for 171, 250, 8201 for parks and recreation capital expenses. Where the debt service for the playground was not incurred due to the use of ARPA funds, we would ask to transfer that associated loan payment and expense to the recreation department budget. Those additional funds would cover improvements to the new playground such as a landscape border and speed bumps that were not included in the ARPA funding approved by council. Currently, the town's fiscal policy authorizes for transfers between departments within the same funds. After speaking with Mary Erhardt, she has recommended that council authorize this transfer since it is a non-salary related and is being moved to capital expenses. And you have a suggested motion, and you can also add to that motion authorization for other interdepartmental transfers, not to exceed $50,000.
Yeah, question for clarity on this second point. Is that in total, or is that, that 50,000, is that in total of transfers, or is that per transfer? What do you?
It could be per transfer.
And is that inclusive of the 20?
Of course, the year-end budget adjustments we would bring to you in total.
Any other questions for Daniel?
We would still have to do budget amendments.
Sure, at the end of the year, this whole year. This would just allow us to move the $20,000 to cover those additional playground expenses.
Makes sense.
Anybody else? Need a motion?
I'll move the town council authorize the town treasurer to transfer $20,000 from 4-100-95100 debt service to 100-71250-8201 Parks and Rec Capital for FY 2122, and these are line item numbers that I'm referencing. And I further authorize the town treasurer to record non-salary related budget transfers along line items and between departments as needed throughout the year to accommodate transfers needed, not to exceed $50,000. I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Chiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke?
Your last item in regular session relates back to the presentation from the Greenway Foundation. The town has received a proposal for the Phase 1 feasibility study for the extension of Hawksville-Greenway to Redwell-Isabella Furnish-Jager Spring, with that cost being $28,000. As previously presented, the foundation has indicated that they are willing to provide funds to match half of that expense.
I'd just like to say that I support this, and I'm for the study, and I was making that step, see if we could get that grant money and see what we can find there, but with that, and that process can go ahead and start now, I will say I'm still have a concern that we need to look forward to determine what we might do with some I and I problems that are through that area before we get way down the road with this. I know that's not an issue here that affects us tonight with what we're doing here with the initial study, but before we get to construction or something like that, when that time comes, I'm just still voice a concern of the I and I problems with our sewer lines down through that area, which would be in the general proximity to this, but I thought moving forward with this.
I guess my question, since they're still waiting on that second allocation, if we allocate this now, will we just sort of move it back over when the ARPA money comes in? We'll just?
Well, effectively, what we're proposing is to use $28,000 from the 180,000 that council had authorized for police vehicles. Police vehicles are not anticipated to be delivered until well into FY 2223, which is also when the second allocation is anticipated to be delivered. So effectively, we're just.
Waiting on the?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. I move that town council approve the use of unallocated ARPA funds to perform the Phase 1 feasibility study for the extension of the Hawksville-Greenway to Redwell-Isabella Furnish-Jager Spring. Further move to award the engineering study for the Phase 1 feasibility study to Racy Engineering in an amount not to exceed $28,000.
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Chiro?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
All right. Spotkin, you have anything for us?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Do we want to do town council comments or go into executive session? What should we do first? I guess makes a difference. Any council comments before we go into executive session?
Yeah, I have one. I made a public statement that I would bring up skateboarding on the Greenway here this meeting and talking to our town manager, you, Mr. Mayor, and our chief of police. Decided it's best to push it off to the work session where we have some time to talk, and also, of course, so we have our chief of police in here so he can help inform the conversation, but I look forward to talking about it next meeting.
Thank you, Joey. Anybody else on that subject or anything else?
Yeah, I appreciate it, Joey. I'd also reach out to Chief Cook and head intendant to bring it up, and I look forward to the discussion.
I think we can come up with a good common sense, I hope that we can come up with a common sense compromise on it.
We're definitely going to address it, though.
Yeah, we're going to address it either way.
Thanks, everyone that came out tonight, and again, to the Stilleri, we appreciate your investment and interest in our town, and wish you the best.
Thank you very much.
I think Audrey's already left. I appreciate his sentiment and his attitude. We need more can-do attitudes like that in our community, and I think he's such a great example, and I think he'll be a good neighbor for you guys.
Bring all your friends. Come, put something in.
I'll get my tour later. Bring samples for the council.
Yeah, thank you all for being here. We're going to go into executive session, you can certainly wait around till we come back, but most people don't, nobody wants to. But if you want to, you certainly can, but pretty much everything's done. Thank you all for being here, have a safe trip home.
Thank you for your vote.
Thank you, Audrey.
All that Greenway stuff.
Y'all need a break, or you okay?
Yeah, but we're painting the front, so it's going to help. That's why I was.
Depends on the providing of everything for the break.
Reimbursement or something.
For better or worse.
Yeah, in theory, if we put it all.
I'm not finished with mine. There's some of mine left, food in there.
Yeah, that's what, that's what he said.
You're not done yet. I know.
I was going to say, if it was you, kudos on that. Yeah, that's good.
He's looking good, though. See you, guys. See you, Charlie. Thanks, Charlie.
Oh, I should have called you up here.
Why do you think the chief went out of town?
He couldn't go any farther that way, could he? Had to stop.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
You're allowed to make a motion?
Yeah, if you're ready for a motion, I move the town council convene and go into closed session for the purposes of consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice and for discussion of the potential disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the town as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A8 and 3 of Code of Virginia. The subject matters are the potential legal obligations of conditional gift to the town and a potential grant of a license in public property.
Second that.
Daniel?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Stephanie Lillard?
Yes.
Jerry Chiro?
Yes.
Jason Pettit?
Yes.
Joey Sowers?
Yes.
Living Web?
Yes.
All right, any more discussion on that? Any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Stephanie Lillard?
Yes.
Jerry Chiro?
Yes.
Jason Pettit?
Yes.
Joey Sowers?
Yes.
Living Web?
Yes.
All right, any more discussion on that? Any more discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Stephanie Lillard?
Yes.
Jerry Chiro?
Yes.
Jason Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
All right. Spotkin, you have anything for us?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Do we want to do town council comments or go into executive session? What should we do first? I guess it makes a difference. Any council comments before we go into executive session?
Yeah, I have one. I made a public statement that I would bring up skateboarding on the Greenway here this meeting and talking to our town manager, you, Mr. Mayor, and our chief of police. Decided it's best to push it off to the work session where we have some time to talk, and also, of course, so we have our chief of police in here so he can help inform the conversation, but I look forward to talking about it next meeting.
Thank you, Joey. Anybody else on that subject or anything else?
Yeah, I appreciate it, Joey. I'd also reach out to Chief Cook and head intendant to bring it up, and I look forward to the discussion.
I think we can come up with a good common sense, I hope that we can come up with a common sense compromise on it.
We're definitely going to address it, though.
Yeah, we're going to address it either way.
Thanks, everyone that came out tonight, and again, to the Stilleri, we appreciate your investment and interest in our town, and wish you the best.
Thank you very much.
I think Audrey's already left. I appreciate his sentiment and his attitude. We need more can-do attitudes like that in our community, and I think he's such a great example, and I think he'll be a good neighbor for you guys.
Bring all your friends. Come, put something in.
I'll get my tour later. Bring samples for the council.
Yeah, thank you all for being here. If we're going to go into executive session, you can certainly wait around till we come back, but most people don't, nobody wants to. But if you want to, you certainly can, but pretty much everything's done. Thank you all for being here, have a safe trip home.
Thank you for your vote.
Thank you, Audrey.
All that Greenway stuff.
Y'all need a break, or you okay?
Yeah, but we're painting the front, so it's going to help. Yeah.
Depends on the providing of everything for the break.
Yeah, in theory, if we put it all.
I'm not finished with mine. There's some of mine left, food in there.
Yeah, that's what, that's what he said.
You're not done yet.
I know. I was going to say, if it was you, kudos on that. Yeah, that's good. Yeah, that's good.
He's looking good, though. See you, guys. See you, Charlie. Thanks, Charlie. See you all. Thank you, Mr. Chiro, for not throwing me under the bus.
You what?
Thank you for not throwing me under the bus.
Oh, I should have called you up here, yeah.
Saved that. Why do you think the chief went out of town?
He couldn't go any farther that way, could he? Had to stop.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
You're allowed to make a motion?
Yeah, if you're ready for a motion, I move the town council convene and go into closed session for the purposes of consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice and for discussion of the potential disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the town as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A8 and 3 of Code of Virginia. The subject matters are the potential legal obligations of conditional gift to the town and a potential grant of a license in public property.
Second that.
Daniel?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Stephanie Lillard?
Yes.
Jerry Chiro?
Yes.
Jason Pettit?
Yes.
Joey Sowers?
Yes.
Living Web?
Yes.
First.[1550.12] (Music) 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 (Music)